Okay, good evening. Thank you all for coming on such a blustery night. We are here for the candidate forum for the Issaquah City Council and my name's Nina Milligan. I'm the communications manager for Highlands Council and I work here, right here at Blakely Hall. And thanks again for all of you coming. I just have a few thank yous to take care of and then I'm going to turn over the lectern to Nate and to the candidates. I'd like to thank Highlands Council, I work for Highlands Council, but Lindsey Pinkston is the community program manager and she's in the back and thank you Lindsey for helping putting on this and other great programs. We have Halloween bingo tomorrow night. I also like to thank Issaquah Reporter who has been the media sponsor for these candidate forums since they started in 2017 and the city of Issaquah TV for bringing audio visual support and for creating a nice video for those people who are unable to come tonight to watch it later or for you all to watch it again. We have a great team of volunteers who helped put this together. It includes Renee Zimmerman, Madeline Kane, who's our timekeeper tonight, and Nate Perea, all residents of Issaquah Highlands who spend their time and talents to put together a program that is of value to the whole city. Tonight, our moderator is Nate Perea and he grew up here in Issaquah and moved back to Issaquah Highlands when it was time to raise his family. Nate is well-known as a public speaker. He serves as master of ceremonies, keynote speaker, and as an expert panelist for many local and regional events. He's served on many city boards and committees as well as leadership roles here in Issaquah Highlands. He's even run for city council. I had to put that in. Nate's role as candidate forum moderator involves reading into the community interests, following what the topics are in the news and the previous forums, and formulating questions to come here that are in confidentiality until you hear them tonight. So the candidates haven't heard them, I haven't heard them, the rest of the committee hasn't heard them. So I'm excited to see what you all have to say about those things. If you would help me, I'd like to thank Nate for doing this for us and welcome him to the lectern.
All right. Thanks Nina. Packed house tonight. We are very thankful for Issaquah TV for being here to film this so we can not only broadcast it tonight, but it will be up on YouTube for everyone to share and watch and make sure you get it out to your friends and family to watch as well. Ballots have gone out, so they should be in mailboxes now. Go out and find them and fill them out, right? We would prefer that. So make sure that you remind your friends and family it is an off-year election, so a lot of times people aren't aware that there are actually really important things happening this year. So get out and vote. We pulled the community to ask about topics that were important, that they felt were important, and we've developed questions to ask each of the candidates here tonight. Before we get started though on introductions and questions for the candidates, we have four candidates up here running for contested seats and we have a couple of seats that are running up for reelection but no opponents. So we have one of the council members here tonight. We've got Lindsey Walsh here who is a current sitting council member. We're not going to have her join us up here for questions tonight, but we did want to recognize her, thank her for her service on the council. So thank you. We will meet the other four individuals up here in just a moment. Real quickly for the TV audience and for anybody out there who might be new to this process in Issaquah, just to give you some background, Issaquah operates in a council mayor format and you can think of that as the mayor being the executive director, the CEO of the city's operations, and your city council being the board of directors, so to speak, who will evaluate, pass ordinances, evaluate and pass the budget every year and other expenditures. And there are seven individuals that sit on the city council and like I mentioned, four of those seats are up for reelection. Two of them here are being contested by these four individuals running this year. Also, format for the evening. So I'm going to, we're going to do introductions here and we'll start from Michelle and go this way. After each introduction, the candidate can give a 60-second opening statement. And just to give you a heads up, with your opening statement, we're going to ask you what your favorite movie is. And note that series and trilogies don't count, you actually have to pick a movie. So, a lot of heads up, they all are aware now, right? Okay. So, let's see here. We've also got a timekeeper. So you guys are going to have 60 seconds in the opening statement round and then for questions, they'll each get two minutes each. There aren't any rebuttals, this is a forum, not a debate, so keep that in mind as you are answering it. So I'm going to go ahead and start here with Michelle Kemper. Michelle and her husband have lived in Issaquah for over 20 years, recently moved to the Highlands. She's served on the City Issaquah Urban Village Development Commission, a lot of other nonprofit boards of directors of youth and health services. She's retired from a management career of over 35 years in the financial industry, serving as a vice president and chief compliance officer. Please welcome Michelle Kemper. And Michelle, tell us your favorite movie and then your one-minute opening statement, please.
Favorite movie is, favorite movie's easy. African Queen. It's got action, it's got romance, it's got scene set designs. My all-time favorite, African Queen.
Go ahead and then opening statement. Why are you running?
I am running, I'm wanting to serve on our city council to bring my skillset in financial management. With my background as a chief compliance officer, I oversaw state financial exams on a $40 billion asset company and ran a multimillion dollar budget center. I understand financial exams and our city has failed its last four financial exams, so I understand the inefficiencies that have been noted and it is a matter of building up our processes internally to our city. That failure has actually caused us to lose track of where we're at. We now have a $5.2 million deficit. It's called actually a structural deficit. That's when the city is spending more money than we're taking in. And a structural deficit means that this exists at a time when the economy is running on all cylinders. So we're running at full capacity and yet we're still spending more than we're taking in. So I would appreciate your consideration for me as a council member with my financial background. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And also running for the same seat, Zach Hall is next here. Zach has lived in Issaquah for over 22 years in South Cove, graduated from Issaquah High School, Bachelor's of Science in Biology from University of Washington, currently works as a legislative assistant in the Washington State House of Representatives, commuted all the way from his office right here tonight. He has also managed local political campaigns and done tax research for nonprofits. Please help me welcome Zach Hall. Toughest question you've had to answer the whole campaign, your favorite movie and 60-second opening statement.
All right, great. This is going to date me a little bit, but my favorite movie is, you said no trilogies, Harry Potter and the Prisoner of Azkaban. So hi, everyone. My name's Zach Hall. A little bit about me, Issaquah is my hometown and I've loved everything about growing up here. But like you, I've seen our best of the Northwest town triple in size and I struggle with the daily crisis of traffic. I think we can do better. I work for the state legislature and my job is to help coordinate policy development and communicate with the public here in Issaquah and all across the greater southeast King County region. And over the last three years, I've also had the privilege of knocking on nearly 10,000 Issaquah doors in our community. And I've heard hundreds of Issaquah stories along the way. My background, working for the state legislature, organizing out in the Issaquah community and growing up here in Issaquah gives me a unique and well-informed understanding of the issues playing out here in Issaquah and all across our region. That's why I'm proud to be endorsed by our local firefighters. Our former mayors Fred Butler and Ava Freysenger, city council members Mariah Batiste, Victoria Hunt, and Lindsey Walsh, and our state representative serving in the legislature in Olympia. So I'm looking forward and chatting more about the issues, about what you guys care about and thank you very much for having us out.
Thanks Zach. All right. And running for the position number three on the city council, I should have clarified, Zach and Michelle are running for city council seat number two. Barb and Tim, who will meet here in a minute, are running for seat number three. So Barb has been a resident of Issaquah for over 35 years and she, prior to, she recently kind of retired, I guess. She's working now as a business manager at The Garage, a teen cafe here in Issaquah. Prior to that, her career was in communications, public relations for the Issaquah School District, and also community relations planner for King County Department of Transportation. She's volunteered at work. The Issaquah School District Board of Directors, where she served as a board member, the Arts Commission, Together Center Board of Directors, Influence of Choice Kiwanis and Campfire. She's received the Issaquah Hall of Fame Award in 2012 and the Golden Apple Award in 2012. Please welcome Barb DiMichelle. And Barb, your favorite movie and opening statement.
My favorite movie of all time is Groundhog Day. I am a huge Bill Murray fan. He makes me laugh. He doesn't have to do anything, he just makes me laugh. I also think it's a wonderful parable about how people evolve to kindness. I am running for position three on the Issaquah City Council because I would like Issaquah to remain the warm and welcoming place it was when I arrived here 35 years ago. And the key to that, to me, is affordable housing. That's my top priority and I think it's a key issue in our community. With a special focus on affordable housing for our teachers, our firefighters, police officers, nurses at Swedish, all of the people in our community who provide us so much have jobs here and cannot find a place to live because it's not affordable. My second priority is transportation. 17 years at the King County Department of Transportation, working on both roads and transit, and I think we can improve both in our community. And finally, strong support for our social service and nonprofit organizations in the community. Again, groups that provide so much to give us community cohesion and togetherness as a community. Thank you.
And also running for position three, Tim Flood. Tim has lived in South Cove in Issaquah for seven years with his wife and two daughters and he's served on the Issaquah Traffic Task Force, the Washington Conservation Voters Endorsement Board, the Issaquah Park Board Committee, Big Brothers and Big Sisters of America. And professionally, Tim is a global security showcase director and program manager in the software industry. So please welcome Tim Flood.
Thank you. I'm running for city council because-
Favorite, favorite movie?
Oh, favorite movie. It really kind of depends on the mood I'm in, but if I have to pick one, I am going to say Dead Poets Society, which was the one that changed my life the most, right? Carpe Diem. Go see it if you haven't seen it, especially if you're young, it'll change your life. So that doesn't count against my time. So I'm running for city council because I think we need someone, or we need someone on council whose platform and priorities really reflect our citizens, right? So we've got endless empirical and anecdotal evidence that our citizens are most focused on improving mobility, intelligent growth, and given the situation we find ourselves in right now, governing with a fiscally responsible mindset. So when it comes to improving mobility, I served on the Traffic Task Force, that's given me an in-depth knowledge of the issues that we face, realistic solutions to address them. When it comes to intelligent growth, I want to protect our green space. I want to update our impact fees every two years to ensure developers pay their fair share and I want to construct a developer code of conduct so that we can address things like noise, parking, and impacts to residents. And when it comes to fiscal responsibility, we're facing a $5.2 million budget shortfall and I think somebody that has been endorsed by the Eastside Business Association brings a master's of business administration and my business background, a pragmatic, realistic approach to managing a budget is what is called for right now. And I look forward to the rest of the discussion this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you to all the candidates and really interesting to find out a little bit more about them than just your opening statements, so thanks for sharing. Barb mentioned the movie Groundhog's Day and at this point in the game, these folks have been to a lot of candidate forums, so it probably is feeling a lot like Groundhog's Day. And just recently, last week, all of these candidates attended a candidate forum hosted by the Issaquah Kiwanis Club. And in that, of course, they were asked about a lot of the same topics we're going to talk about here tonight, but instead of having you just regurgitate what you were able to get out in their 60-second window here, this first question, I'm going to take a little, a moment to kind of recap what you each gave as your answer there and then ask you to expand on that a little bit. So the first question is going to be about the budget. So we do have a $5.2 million budget deficit that was proposed in the mayor's recommendation, recommended budget to council. Mayor Polly, who actually just joined us over there, hello. She has also suggested a mixture of expenditure, cuts to expenditures, increases to revenues. Some of that is delaying hiring for certain positions, reduction in parks programming, and then also increases to property taxes, utility taxes, park permits, et cetera. Now, in the Kiwanis forum, they also asked about the candidates' stances on this budget issue. And we're going to start with Tim down here and move our way back this way so we can rotate our answers here. So Tim, in that Kiwanis forum, paraphrasing, you said largely supportive of the mayor's proposal. She's mostly proposed a lot of the same things you would have proposed. You're aware that it's a mixture of revenue increases and some services cuts. About $40 a month to the average Issaquah household out there, $480 a year or so will need to be raised. And you said we've got to ask for that from residents at the same time we're delivering the news that we probably will have to cut some services. And you then followed it up with saying, "Well, unfortunately, that's the position we found ourselves in and hopefully it's just temporary, we can put money back in the budget later." So some folks might hear that and say, "Well, are you just taking the proposal as is and that's about it?" Or what else would you like to expand upon that, given you only had a short timeframe at that forum? What else should voters know about that response and anything else related to the budget?
Yeah, I think once you're a member of city council, you'll have the opportunity to dig down, go line by line and opine and really massage it, but I think it was a really good first draft, I really do. When we face a budget shortfall of $5.2 million, which is essentially 10% of our budget, we've got a really limited menu of revenue options within the city and there's only a handful of options that we have. And so the big chunk is 1.9 million is resulting from increasing and coming in line within utility taxes there. And so if you take 5.2, take away the 1.9, I've got 3.3 left that you've got to address through cuts. I also mentioned that, you know, we're not cutting everywhere. We're not cutting police and fire and safety. We are making modest increases in different aspects of the budget that are aligned with our strategic plan, right? So we don't just throw that out the window because we've got a rainy day. One thing that I'd like to see us address, whether it's in this budget or one of the ones forthcoming, is to invest in our business community. So we have a neighborhood engagement coordinator and it's a position that I've been supportive of and I'm glad is still included in the budget. We frequently hear about neighborhood engagement, how important that is to everyone. And as I've spoken with lots of business owners and residents around the city, we see that some businesses are going out of business, others are leaving the city, and it would really have a positive return on investment if we had someone to engage that business community, to understand their issues, to retain them, to help them grow their business, to leverage working with the Chamber of Commerce for new businesses. So you can imagine if we spend $38,000 a year, which is a relative drop in the bucket in a municipal budget, we could, we could give a free membership for one year to the Chamber of Commerce to 100 businesses if half of them are home-based and half of them are out of an office space or a facility. And so what that would do is help our businesses have a better chance to succeed and we're going to then have a, you know, the goods and services they deliver as well as, you know, increasing our tax base. And so that's something where we can't just simply cut, we have to invest in the future and try and generate more revenue.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Barb, you in the forums felt that the mayor and the finance director had done a commendable job balancing both revenue increases and expenditure cuts, but you're concerned about the impact on senior gold membership fees, the utility rates for fixed and low-income families. But at the service level, it also sounds like maybe just a general support of what was proposed. What else should voters know about your opinion on the budget and how would you address that?
Yes, I looked through the budget and I thought that there was a commendable work that was done. We learned when, I think all of us were at the Economic Forecast meeting that was held and we learned that budgeting practices in the city needed to be really improved. And I think that again, there's, if you look through the budget, you see over and over and over again, you see where they are trulying the budget and making it reflect actual expenses. And I think that was an excellent job. I did express that budget to me is a statement of our values and so I will be looking at it and how does it impact the citizens? How does it impact especially those people in our community who are struggling? The Gold Pass is a $25 a year fee that senior citizens pay at the community center to access services there. And it's not just because I'm a senior citizen, but I'm a little concerned when the proposal is to quadruple that in one year. And so I would be looking to see if we, I agree that those fees have been the same for a long time and that there should be an increase. I would just like to see if we can figure out a way to either make those more available to our low-income seniors or to do it halfway, let's say, negotiate it halfway. The utility tax increase, again, how is it going to impact our low-income citizens? And I think that the mayor has proposed that we look at giving our low-income seniors a waiver or some kind of relief from that and I would like to make sure that that's included in the plans that the city does. And then the $38,000 that Tim mentioned, I'd like to see that go to a homelessness specialist.
Thanks Barb. Thank you Barb. All right. And then we're going to move over here to Zach on the same topic in that Kiwanis forum. You mentioned that you're in favor of exploring reforms in area where we are out of the ordinary compared to other eastside cities on our utility tax rates and things of that nature, so bringing them up to match those. But then you followed by saying you would like to see an expansion of water rate discount program for seniors and low and fixed income families in Issaquah. So I wanted to give you a chance to expand a little bit more on that. If you're raising rates on some and lowering on others, how does that help fill that gap? And what else should others know about your opinion on the budget?
Yeah. I think the important thing to recognize here is in trying to balance the budget and going through the thoughtful process of raising revenues where we need to and cutting services without harm to the community where we need to, the impact that will have on low-income and fixed-income residents here in Issaquah. And just simply recognizing that by expanding this water utility rate discount program to those residents here in Issaquah is an important step to showing that they belong in this community too and we should be doing everything we can to keep people who contribute to this community, who work here in this community, to stay in the community that they love if they choose to. I'll also just add a little bit, actually in the forum, I was cut off on my answer because it was just for a minute. So originally, I was talking about concerns. I did bring up my concern of the senior gold pass as well. I want to add just a qualifier that I would be concerned if there was not an income level threshold within the senior gold pass from changing it for $25 to $120. Because yes, there's also thinking about our low-income and fixed-income senior residents here in Issaquah, but also there's the possibility that people just might choose not to renew their membership. And so that's a revenue that we were planning on coming to the city that wouldn't be there. I also wanted to talk a little bit about the community grants funding. I think cuts there really need to be made very mindfully. Sometimes organizations do good in our community with that money in ways that we cannot fully quantify through dollars and so being really mindful and working with those organizations to understand how they truly use those community grants is important. And finally, I'll also just mention that wherever the budget ends, I urge our city council members to carefully and through engagement with the community prioritize those projects and services that meet the needs of our community here in Issaquah.
Excellent. Thank you. And Michelle, in that same forum, you said that righting the ship is not a matter of knee-jerk expense cutting because that would be short-term and knee-jerk, to your words there. But we need to develop sustainable revenue sources and that tying revenue to sales tax is the most volatile of revenue sources. So would you expand on that? What are these other alternative revenue sources you envision and then what else should folks know about your opinion on the budget?
Well, to expand, to expand on that, it's not just a matter of raising revenue. To right the ship requires cutting expenses. You can't spend your way out of a structural deficit. So my comments, to expand on them further, in terms of revenue, one of the issues that we're looking at, or the city is looking at, is raising the utility tax. There is, the research on that shows it'll bring in roughly 1.9 million, 1.86 to be exact, that will close about 36% of that gap of our 5.2. That is putting a large burden on our homeowners and the study says it's affordable. But the question is that we've not taken a look at what that impact is on our local businesses. When you've got an economy such as ours that's operating at full steam, when you raise taxes, it actually acts to depress the economy. Now, I'm not saying that that will occur with this, but I'm saying that we're missing the analysis on what will happen if we raise the utility tax on our local businesses. Some of the other things that I was mentioning on knee-jerk cutting, we're looking at nickel and diming some of small expenses, staff contributions to grants to some of our local community activities. These are major cuts to the entity that's being cut with these local grants, but it's only small dollars of an expense saving on the city side. So when I'm talking about picking some of the expense items that we need to pull back on, they need to be large, sustainable dollar amounts, not nickel and dimes from small locations within our budget. And I think the whole thing here is that this is, this needs to be a sustainable cut. By making these cuts and then going back to our old spending patterns a year from now is not going to work. This is going to need close monitoring of line items, big, major line items all the way through. It's probably going to take four or five years to get things, things back.
Thank you. And that is actually a great segue into our second question here. And this time, we're going to go in the order of Zach and Michelle and then Barb and Tim and we'll continue to rotate it. So we've already talked about the budget and the budget deficit and we've gotten some input here. We're going to take a little, a slightly different look at this now because the reality of it is this budget with the 5.2 million deficit will be voted on by the current council in this year. So none of you will actually get to really weigh in on that and vote on it. Also, it was mentioned that we are actually in a really good economic time and have been for a while and we're still seeing a decline in revenues from '17, '18, and now to '19. And so the question here is two parts for the candidates. What do you see at a macro level happening in terms of declining sales revenue and what do we need to be aware of that's contributing to that? But also, when you take office in January, between now and the next budget cycle, what are you going to be doing to make sure we're not repeating this a year from now? So Zach, you're up first.
Thank you for the question, yeah. So the first part of the question is the macro part. I think looking at this at a fine detail, the reason why, or it has been explained to us that the reason why sales tax revenues has been going down is, among other things, a decrease in construction services here in the Issaquah area. So keeping that in mind is important. Moving on into the future, it's also important that we're taking account the people that come here into Issaquah to utilize our businesses, to spend time here in our parks, to participate in the tourism of Issaquah and the surrounding trails too. Those people are paying into our system too and recognizing how we can leverage that and better support small businesses that support tourism and ecotourism and recreation here in Issaquah is important too. What to do so we do not repeat this? You know, let me just back up a little bit. The city's new finance director I was really impressed with and same with our current mayor in de-mystifying the budget, if you will. And they were very quick to value transparency and accountability in this whole process. You know, during a city council meeting on April 1st, our finance director spoke on camera about the need for outside eyes and independent review of our city's financial management processes. And bringing this issue to light was just the first step as we're all discussing up here now. It's important now to support plans that have checks and balances in our finance department and transition plans in place for key personnel before they leave. And also exploring how the city council can support the finance department is also an important conversation to be had and I look forward to having that.
Great, thank you. And Michelle, same questions.
I think at a macro level, we need to understand where the revenue opportunities are that are coming to Issaquah. Let's take a big giant step back. This area is going to have a population, not going to have, we are in the middle of a population growth. We're going to have another 1.8 million by the year 2040. We need to realize that Issaquah and 16 other cities are going to take 65% of that growth and 75% of the jobs. Let's take a giant step back and take a look at the job centers of Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, Seattle. Just pick on one company, Amazon, 45,000 employees in downtown Seattle with 11,000 job openings and they're moving thousands of those employees to Bellevue. As urbanization spreads for looking for affordable housing, they're moving from Bellevue out this way. So the- So the, as Zach was mentioning, the opportunities for developers to do high-density affordable housing in our area on the limited land that we have left, we need to be able to streamline some of those activities with developers so that they're not doing duplicate permit processing. In terms of not repeating some of the budget crisis that we're in, our finance audit showed where our internal weaknesses are. We need to be addressing those. We have a fabulous finance director. She and her team know exactly what needs to be worked on. We have a new finance system. And the number one thing that needs to be done is there needs to be a financial report delivered to the city council on a regular cycle. As I understand by talking with city council members, that's not been done in the past. In order for council to give help and direction to our city, we need to actually see those finance reports. We also need to see all pending lawsuits and other liens and bond activity. I want to know what the bond ratings are and what our loan debt servicing is on a regular cycle. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. And then we are going to Barb first.
Okay. I agree with Michelle and Zach that the great reason for the sales tax to be down is because the construction is reduced and construction permits are down, so that's going to continue. That may be an impact of the moratorium that was imposed by the council and mayor earlier. And I think most of us agree that that was probably a good thing to do, because it slowed everything down so that we could take a deep breath, look at what we were doing and how we were doing it. But the rollout of that, well, is it just a dip from that moratorium? Or is it a permanent situation? And that will be, yet to be seen. In terms of bringing more business to the area, I go back to my top requirement, or my top priority, and that is the affordable housing issue. Because our, the affordable housing is driving a recruitment and retention crisis among all of our businesses and all of our service sector in the area. People cannot afford to live here. Therefore, they may take a job here, but they don't stay for very long, because it turns out that the commute and the cost of being here and working here is so much. And so we're very much heading towards a wall where companies will not want to come here, because they won't be able to recruit the talented employees that they need to do business. And so affordable housing is a critical issue to our business community, to our community as a whole in terms of the cohesiveness of our community and the long-term health of our community. And that's the reason I want to focus on it. And that's...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great. Tim?
I think the decrease in sales tax, there's a few different factors. And I don't claim to have a crystal ball, but part of it is consumer behavior, right? Where people are buying things. So if you're buying things online or elsewhere, it could be a sign of kind of a weakening economy. So we've had boom times here, and it could be a sign of an overhaul when you talk about macro view of it. And then, you know, a result of the businesses that are in town, right? So if businesses are going out of business and leaving town, then we have fewer folks paying into the sales tax pool. So historically, our budget also, we counted on those permitting and the growth in the city for operations. And that's something where we're kind of, we're facing a reckoning of that kind of mindset in the past now. And so everyone here has mentioned the finance director, and I have a similar level of confidence and appreciate the fact that we're having that come-to-Jesus moment here with the reality of our forecasting here. So we've got to have a more realistic and balanced approach when we're forecasting our revenue based on, you know, reality and what the projection and growth and permitting is as well. So, you know, I also think it's really important that we work to attract and retain businesses here. We're talking about sales tax. In order for sales tax, we need to have businesses that are successful here, that want to locate here, that want to employ people here, that are going to contribute to the economy here, right? So between BNO and sales tax, it's 45% of the revenue of the city, right? And so I was endorsed by the Eastside Business Alliance, and one of the reasons was I've got, you know, ideas for that, right? In terms of attracting and retaining employers into town, being more friendly, those are the folks that are going to pay into the community. If we can attract another top-end employer here, if you look at really the most recent, the best roadway project, as far as I know, in the city's history here, Five Short Cuts and One, the southeast 62nd, Costco ponied up $25 million for that, right? So a great corporate partnership there. You look at our other large employers and longstanding developers in town, and those are the folks that are donating to different roadway projects, the Village Theater, the different nonprofits in town, you name it.
All right. Thank you. So for the third question, we're going to move topics here to traffic, transportation, and mobility. And we've been doing these forums here for now three years, and this is always a hot topic, continuously brought up by the community, asking, what are we going to do? So please tell voters tonight your ideas specific to traffic, transportation, and mobility. And I would encourage you to be very specific and be bold with something. The community's looking for bold solutions. We've heard a lot, but what are you really thinking you want to put out there? And in this order, we're going to go backwards. We're going to go Tim, Barb, Michelle, and then Zach. So Tim, you're up again.
So addressing mobility is my top priority. And, you know, as I said, my platform is a reflection of what the community feels, right? And so we've got this deficit where we've continued to grow and grow, and we've got a backlog of projects that are out there, and they're not going anywhere, right? So we're taking action now on the stoplight at Providence Point. We started working on that years and years ago, and we're just seeing to where we might actually have that happen. So I think the job of the city council is to continually address that issue, right? So we went out for a traffic bond in 2016. It didn't work. Those projects are still on the list. We're going to have to address them, right? So my opponent, I'll steal her thunder a little bit, is very focused on transit. And she has a good point, that we do need to increase the percentage of folks that leverage mass transit. But the truth is, forecasted growth in this area of 1.8 million people by 2040 means that there are going to be more cars on the road, regardless of whether you put more people on transit. We've dug ourselves into this hole by kind of kicking the can down the road and not addressing the work on our roadways. And we need to take a stand, and we need to find solutions to address those roadway issues here. As I go around and talk to people, and they say the traffic on Front Street or, you know, the speeding on Highlands Drive is an issue, I can't just say, well, if you don't like it, take a bus, right? The roads have to work for us to get around the city, okay? And I think if you say that transit is going to address that, and we can remove cars from the road, the truth is, it's either misinformed or disingenuous. The truth of the matter is, we've got more cars coming, and we've got to address the roadway projects. That's what the citizens are asking for. That's what the city council needs to do.
Excellent. Thank you. And Barb?
Thank you. So I have a very scientific demonstration. We have this many roads, and we have this many cars, okay? And it's like trying to put a quart of water down a little pint of room. And yes, I agree, we need road improvements, absolutely. And I also agree, transit does not work for everyone. And that's the reason I'm proposing that we have a full menu of options. Out here in the Highlands, we doorbell all over the Highlands. We have very narrow roads. We're not going to get a great big bus down that road. But maybe we can deal with shuttles. Maybe we can help our employers to do van pulling, car pulling, ride sharing, where the rides start in the neighborhood and go out. Maybe we can work with employees, employers to encourage telecommuting. We have an office of sustainability in the city that is already doing and working on this. I would like to see that office strengthened, and I would like the focus to be there. In the long run, building roads, widening roads is damaging to the environment. We all agree, we want to preserve our open spaces and our environment. It's very costly, and it takes a long time. Do we want to start solving our problems today? Then we have to look at the full range of alternates to single-passenger cars. And as we become more dense and more urban, you better believe that people are going to want that transit. They're not going to be wanting to be stuck in their car in traffic jams. They're going to want that transit. So let's start being proactive and start moving us toward a system that is balanced between needed road improvements and a full range of transit and alternatives of single-passenger cars. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. We're going to move now to Michelle, and then we'll wrap with Zach on this one.
Thank you for the question. I think we really need to do a reality check here and set our expectations. We have an expectation when we say we want traffic congestion solved, meaning that I want to be able to get in my car, drive to my job, go to the grocery store, go to pick up the kids at school, and not have anyone in my way. That's what we all mean when we talk about, I want traffic solved. The reality is, this is a city issue, and it's a regional issue. On a regional level, when you take a look at 405 and 90 and State Route 18, we have regional agencies that are focused on changes in terms of capacity. If you can't get through Bellevue, you can't go north and south on I-5. You can't go 405, excuse me, I don't know my geography. You can't get through Seattle, you can't go north and south on 5. Regionally, we're looking at adding a bypass or a connector that will move people from Maple Valley and Black Diamond over to State Highway 405, so that it's bypassing 18. That will take pressure off of the side streets here in Issaquah. That's an example of how we need to partner for regional solutions. Locally, our city is already working on ways to increase the capacity to move our local communities so that we can get from our driveway down to major thoroughfares. We have roundabouts, we've got traffic calming, we've got technology with left-hand turn signals that can flash yellow, so you're not sitting waiting to turn. These are all examples of what our city is doing. This is a moving target. We have a population growth that is bringing more and more cars in and more population in. Yes, light rail is coming, and I believe the latest is that it's 2041. That date seems to change as we're looking at light rail. Buses may be a nice alternate. But my husband and I moved to the Highlands here, because my husband lacks mobility. Getting on a public bus is great. I can get him on the bus. But once we get off the bus, there's nowhere to go.
Thank you very much. And then we'll wrap up with Zach.
Yeah, absolutely. In this conversation about traffic and transportation and mobility, it's really important to talk about it and frame it with two perspectives, and that's pairing the local work that we do here in town, the quality of life improvements that get you around town more quickly, more easily, more safely. With, we talk about being bold, with bigger, bolder, more regional solutions that actually solve the gridlock that we see in between our cities. And so on local traffic improvement, there are things that we can do locally, like I said, to get us around town more quickly and more safely, and also limit pass-through traffic through our town, which is one of the leading causes of traffic, especially in the valley area. You know, we can be reprogramming our traffic lights to prioritize movements around town, empowering our residents over movement through it. We can explore ways of making our roadways more urban feeling. That's features like roundabouts and crosswalks, things that calm traffic in pedestrian transit and bike-friendly access along our roads. We can better focus, this is another one too, that doesn't get talked about very often, we can better focus on traffic enforcement and dangerous driving behavior, which contributes to traffic. And we can prioritize low-cost, high-impact projects that improve our residents' quality of life. And I think someone had mentioned, I can't remember if it was this forum or a previous forum, the Old Town Traffic Calming Project, which is a perfect example of investing in a community and ensuring that they can improve their quality of life. But regionally, we also need to be going to our neighboring cities, our school boards, our chambers of commerce. We need to come together, we need to identify and advocate for the projects in our region that benefit us all. And from my understanding and from my experience working in the state legislature, I know that these kinds of inter-local agreements work. And we saw this model succeed just earlier this year, and in the interest of time, I'll ask that you go to my website to read a little bit more about that. But we can build more by this progress, by supporting, you know, shoot.
Thanks, Zach. Appreciate it. Okay, one last round of questions, and then we will do closing statements. So this last question has to do with the environment. I don't know if you all have heard, but Issaquah treasures its natural environment and our surroundings. Maybe you've heard that a few times. So it's important, residents want to know, what are your stances and your priorities and your thoughts about what needs to be addressed and what you propose to help take care of our natural environment? And we are going to go in reverse order this time, so Zach, Michelle, Barb, and Tim. Zach, you're up again.
Perfect. My favorite question. You know, our easy access to lakes of Amish and the trails within the Issaquah Alps makes Issaquah a special place to live, work, and play. You're probably not going to have a lot of disagreement about that here in Issaquah. We need to ensure that our community parks are safe and connected and well-maintained for us all to enjoy. We need to preserve and protect our forested hillsides, our open spaces, and our salmon habitat that define Issaquah's unique charm. Let me just touch on one thing really quick. Earlier this year, the city announced something called the Green Issaquah Partnership, joining over 13 other Puget Sound cities. And I'm hugely supportive of this effort, which would establish a citywide community stewardship program to support our parks and our open spaces here in Issaquah. And one of the focuses of this project is on urban trees, which have numerous community benefits. You know, they reduce the rates of asthma, of other illness and stress among our residents, reduce obesity by encouraging outdoor activity. They protect biodiversity and filter pollutants. They manage stormwater and reduce flooding and increase property values. I could go on and on about the community benefits that urban trees have. So that's one of my priorities. When I'm elected to serve as your Issaquah City Council member, is ensuring that we have a lot of urban trees to benefit our community. And then with the last however many seconds I have, I also want to touch on climate change. We need to take action now, including from a city scale. Locally, we can look for ways to lower our city's carbon footprint. We can expand opportunities for pedestrian, bike, and transit-friendly mobility around town. We can make it easier for our residents to get their foot in the door on solar power technology. Oftentimes, there's a barrier there. We can bring electric vehicle charging stations into town, whether that be through a city effort or through public-private partnership, and requiring that all new construction be built to at least a Built Green Four Star certification.
Thank you. And Michelle?
My husband and I settled here because of what we were, learned to call the Issaquah Alps. On city council, I commit to four things. I will communicate the value of our natural resources to the people so we are informed, because an informed voter is a powerful advocate. I will consistently focus on a budget line item that is permanently there to fund our local environmental groups. I will focus on limiting high-density housing and commercial development to the valley floor to protect our hillsides. And with my background as a compliance officer, I will be forced, I will want to enforce the use of our Issaquah municipal codes and city policies that protect our environment. That's a non-negotiable item. Now, once the land is paved over, there's no going back. There is no budget line item, there is no revenue stream that can bring back our Sammamish watershed once it's gone. That is our generation's responsibility to protect. I think we need stewardship programs to support grants. We need to control development for urban sprawl. And as Zach said, I totally agree, we need programs that our city is sponsoring that's addressing our community's support to fight climate change.
All right. Thank you very much. And Barb, you're up next.
Thank you. I started my career as a teacher. I spent two terms on the Issaquah School Board. The last nine years, I've been working on youth substance abuse prevention and youth mental health promotion. And currently, I'm the business manager at The Garage. So my, the thread through my life has been youth and health. And without parks, without places for kids to run and play and get fresh air and be in nature and learn about fish and dogs and cats and all other things, they live a very impoverished life. And so we must maintain the health of our environment. People have said to me, well, with your focus on affordable housing, is it all going to be density and none of the environmental things? And I've said, that would not be my dream about it. I would love to see a mix of what will probably be dense, but with plenty of parks and places for people to be, and especially for kids to roam safely. I've also been kind of raising the issue about the Growth Management Act, and I've been out doorbelling and learning that a lot of people don't know about the Growth Management Act. That is the main vehicle that is protecting our forests and farmlands outside of the boundary of the city of Issaquah. And I think we need to do some education and reeducation about that really important act, and how saving those forests is saving ourselves. And finally, I have been involved with Issaquah People for Climate Action, where we are focused on some very doable actions that people locally can take to start to reduce the warming of the planet. It seems like it's impossible. What can we do locally? There's lots that we can do locally. I'm really proud to be a part of that group. And we will be working with the city council and the county council to try to move forward with... and the county council to try to move forward with plans.
All right. And we'll wrap up this round with Tim.
Thank you. So this is one issue where I'm actually proud to live in a city where we're all aligned here, and that's part of the reason that we love Issaquah, right? So both sides of the aisle and both sides of the debate here. So a little bit about my history here. This is, you know, Cougar Mountain was my first exposure to Issaquah, and we fell in love, and then we were fortunate enough to be able to find a home in a neighborhood that we love. Since that time, I volunteered for Washington Conservation Voters and the Park Bond Committee here in Issaquah, Keep Issaquah Beautiful Day, right? So I put my money where my mouth is in terms of my volunteer time. One pillar of my platform is intelligent growth, and a major factor there is to protect our green space. And so the city has opportunities from time to time to acquire green space. I think it's particularly important along our watershed. The salmon runs here are important to our identity as a city, and ultimately, to the economy of the state. And so I think it's important that we continue to do that. I've been, I've been proud of what the city's done thus far. Confluence Park is a good example of what we can do. Another thing we can do on the city council is really to strengthen and enforce our development codes, not to necessarily give variances, particularly when properties are along our waterways. So take a look at the types of businesses that are along the waterways. Four years ago, I ran for council, and I was really proud to have bought my campaign signs from a business right here in town. I went toward the facility and was horrified because they were directly adjacent to the creek. And I think that's something that is not the type of business that we should have in that particular location. That's something that we can, we can write codes and the city council can have an impact. And I like a couple of Zach's ideas in terms of encouraging solar and building out the electric grid to help encourage folks to have electric vehicles. That's something that is within the purview and the ability of the city. We do have a partnership we've established with Solarise to take advantage of that, but that's what we can do to have an impact, not only in the city here, but on a global climate change issue. And then one other modest proposal that I have is to require recycling bins at all of our gas stations and car washes. So I find myself really, I'm conscientious recycler, but not necessarily when I'm getting my gas, and I may, from time to time, throw recycling in the trash. I think that's a modest proposal that could have a positive impact.
Thank you very much, Tim. All right. Well, speaking of the environment and nature, it sounds like it's trying to enter the building here with the storm going on outside. So we're going to wrap up here with some closing statements, and much like the opening statements, I'll ask the candidates to give us a little glimpse into their personality and their personal life here. So we're going to go in the order of Tim, Barb, Michelle, and Zach. And before your opening statement, let us all know your favorite travel destination.
Favorite travel destination?
Tim, you're up.
Oh, wow. I don't even have the time to think about it. Historically, I just went on a trip to London with my two brothers, something we talked about for, I don't know, two decades. We finally got a chance to do it, and thank you to Lauren, if you're watching, for taking care of the kids while I was gone. For me, my platform is really a reflection of the city and the citizens. Issaquah is my special interest group. My platform is not derived from an outside political party for a nonpartisan office or any special interest group. I'm running for council because my priorities are your priorities to address mobility. When I'm on the traffic task force and we're looking at that list of projects, surprisingly, there weren't any transit projects, right? That is not what we can control. We can advocate for those, we can agree on that, but we have to take action on actual roadway projects. Intelligent growth and fiscal responsibility are key to the performance of our next city council member. I think I'm better equipped to handle that in the times that we face, and I thank you very much for your time.
There was a little confusion on the time there. You do have two minutes, but if you want to continue or if you've finished, I think you have one more minute. A little to you.
I'll yield my time.
All right. And Barb?
A year and a half ago, I went to Finland, where my grandparents on my father's side immigrated from. And it was a life-changing experience. It was a wonderful insight into the immigrant experience and what it meant for people to go across the Atlantic and then come here when they were 18. So I want to thank everybody for tonight's forum. It was very good and very well managed, so thank you so much. I want to tell you that I would really appreciate your support. I've lived in Issaquah for 35 years. I've been deeply, deeply involved in this community, and I think I really understand what the community both needs and wants. In terms of the position on transportation and transit, I've been an advocate for things in this community all the time I've been here. And I've had a lot of people tell me that some of my ideas are nuts or crazy or, don't do that, you'll get in trouble. I started a recycling program for the Issaquah School District right after I arrived here. People said, nobody will ever recycle. Remember when we used to put paper in the garbage? And three years later, the Issaquah School District had a recycling program. Six years ago, I was said, I was told, please do not bring up youth mental illness. Please don't talk about that. And I went ahead, and now everybody's talking about it. And it's really important that sometimes you do sort of crazy things and you dream big. And I think that I have that ability to both dream and advocate on your behalf. And I would be, excuse me, I would be honored to have your vote and your support. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Barb. Next up is Michelle, and then Zach.
You've heard me talk a lot about the budget, and folks that I've talked to offline have said, Michelle, you're so focused on the budget, what about all the social issues and support programs for our city? And my answer back is, you have to do both. You can walk and chew gum at the same time. If we don't have our budget in order, we can't be funding the rest of our support structures that we need for our city. I want to make a big compliment here. Our city staff and our mayor, these are very strong, dedicated individuals. You've got a group of people who are working very actively to solve our business problems, our city problems. And I would like to single out a couple of them, but if I do that, I should be naming all of them because they've done a fabulous job. And I've had the privilege of actually interviewing several of them offline so I could understand more in depth of what their job is, and I admire them all. In addition to that, I admire the residents. One of the things that I love best about this community is that we are an involved population. You are examples of this. You are involved in terms of what goes on, not just in your own home life, but what happens here in our community. You speak up and you advocate, and that is what I would like to do for you as a city council representative. We care. This is a city that I care about. And I forgot that I was supposed to answer, what is my favorite city that I like to travel to? So I'll circle back to that, and the answer is Cannon Beach, Oregon. We pack our entire family, my kids, their spouses, my grandchildren, we go to Cannon Beach. We do this every summer. We spend the summer at a rental house. We play game night, we have smores. And now some of these grandkids are teenagers, some of them are as old as Zach. And we cart them off to the beach, and they are forced to play game night, and they're actually, say, but we need to do the puzzles and the games and the charades, so our favorite place is Cannon Beach.
Very good.
Oh, one more thing, I have time. For more information on me, go to michellekemper.org.
Okay. Excellent. And then Zach, wrap it up for us.
My favorite place, you know, this one's easy for me. I'm a big fan of our national park system here in the country, and, you know, I've always wanted to visit the Grand Canyon. I haven't had that opportunity yet, but my favorite place so far is the Olympic National Park here in, go Washington State. If you've ever spent some time up on Hurricane Ridge during the summer, it is just quite amazing. So speaking of that, let me just close by painting a picture of you, or a picture for you, the vision for Issaquah's future that I hear time and time again on your doorstep. You live in Issaquah. You can get around town quickly and safely in your car, on a bus, or on foot, or on your bike, because the city's invested in your mobility and your quality of life. You look up and see our green forested hillsides preserved. You look down and see our rivers and streams protected, and you feel at home. You have easy access to a park where you can go relax or go for a run or just enjoy time with friends and family. You know your city's working hard and doing everything it can to make Issaquah a more affordable and welcoming and safe place to live, to raise a family, or to do business. And most importantly, you know that your city council will listen to you, and then they'll go to bat for you. I share this vision for our future. And as a younger resident concerned for my own future, and a hometown resident concerned for the future of the city that I love, Issaquah, I'd be honored to earn your vote. Thank you very much.
All right. Let's have a round of applause for all of the candidates up here tonight. And just to close things up, I'd like to say that I think one thing that is not up for debate is, regardless of who gets chosen to represent Issaquah, it's just great, we have very caring people up here. I think you can tell that we're in good hands because you all are very capable individuals with a lot of differing backgrounds, and really appreciate you stepping up, putting your name in the hat, and we're lucky to have good candidates across the board. And for all of you out there, when I said that the YouTube video will be online, I said it's going to be out there. You need to share it with your friends and family. You need to remind people to vote. And if anybody out there listening to this doesn't do it, you can't say that politicians are the only ones that lie at candidate forums. So share the video and remind everyone you know to vote. Those are your two jobs leaving here tonight, and thank you very, very much for coming and/or watching on TV. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job.